Okay, let's call our meeting in order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you everybody. We'll call the board members are present. We do have proper notification of a meeting. Before I get started, or before we get started, I would like to take a moment to publicly embarrass Dave. If you have not heard, Dave recently retired from the Heartland Fire Department after many dedicated years of service. And in a prior life, I worked with Dave quite often. And I knew when I went on medical calls that when I saw Dave get out of the ambulance, it gave me a very good feeling because I know that the people were going to be well taken care of by a compassionate and caring person. So I also know that your passion, all the years that you've worked for the fire department carried over to Arrowhead and the levels of service that you provided to our students and to our school. Basically, any situation that occurred at Arrowhead, you were there front center managing it, taking care of it. So publicly, thank you for your service and for your dedication to Arrowhead. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. It's been an honor.
Welcome to the WRS.
Yeah, you told me.
Okay, our first action item was recommendation to approve the minutes of the February 12th, 2020 regular board meeting. We have a motion, a second. Any questions on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next action item is a resolution to approve the bill list. We have a motion, a second on the bill list. Any questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is communication and comments from the members of the public.
No one signed out.
Alright, superintendent's report. Laura.
Board members who were present at the August, I think the date might have been August 26th, the first teacher day where everyone's in the auditorium. We welcome back, we recognize staff members, and then we have professional learning. One of the items of professional learning, not just this past August, but in the past several years, have been about how do we care for students? Not just in an academic manner, I mean, we're a school, so academics are important, but also in a social emotional manner. You know, kids are people, our students are people, and so we care for them and about them. And if they're in a good place emotionally and socially, they're bound to do better academically and be able to achieve their full potential. There's a, I don't want to call it a program, but a systematic approach to caring for students that's called trauma sensitive schools. And part of that August in-service was training teachers about that. And we've been implementing facets of that program or, I guess, that program over the course of the years. And Mr. Adam Bolt and Mr. Dave Bechtel are here to give an update on how that's going and to give some examples. The board has heard of this, but to bring some of it to life since you're not in the classrooms and you can't see this happening.
Yeah, so Dave's one of our special education teachers at North Campus. Him and I worked together at South Campus years ago as well. When unbeknownst to us, we were kind of forming some of these practices just out of lack of anything better to do with the students that we had. We were kind of stumbling upon this as well. So we've been working on a lot of these principles and practices for many years. And then four years ago, review for some of you, we became part of the Wisconsin School Mental Health Pilot Program, which meant that we got training and resources and were able to implement some pieces before other schools in the state. What we presented to you most recently and in the past has kind of been like, hey, here's what trauma informed care is, here's what trauma sensitive schools is all about. We'll have a little bit of review for that. But Dave and I have worked on a pretty intricate case, a pretty severe case of trauma this year that we thought would be good just to kind of share with you kind of the strategies that we had. We won't have a lot of identifying details or details about the case just because anything we share is such a specialized case that you'd be able to identify, people in the know would be able to identify who we're talking about. So the other pieces, I was talking, my wife and I were talking like this weekend. She works at another school, teaches fifth grade. And we were just talking about like the issues that go on with our youth nowadays and how if you don't have an understanding of trauma informed care, it's really hard to work with some of our more difficult cases in schools. And I'll show you some numbers in a second. I was talking about like, actually like, we can't take it for granted how lucky we are to have Dave because Dave's understanding of this topic is what allows us to, one, work with kids that are kind of the really big underdog stories in our school that really won't have a future unless we get in and work with them and work with them in a highly intricate manner. And it keeps us from having to go to alternative places. Not from a financial side, keeping from going to an alternative place, it saves us a ton of money. But it also gives students a better path towards their post-secondary life. So trauma informed care, just to review definition of trauma is exposure to an event that threatens or harms the physical or emotional integrity of the individual or someone close to the individual. What we'll see is that a lot of people have experienced trauma in life, but how we react to trauma is all different, right? So one of the things that's considered a traumatic event in somebody's life is having parents that are divorced and living through a divorce, right? And that's about 50% of the population. Now, now 50% of the population is hugely affected by the divorce, but some people are. And that's like kind of a good example of how people can react differently to different traumas they experience. So that's number two overwhelms the person's ability to respond. And three creates a difficulty functioning. The case that Dave and I will be working through, that's definitely the case. So here's some different traumas that people can be exposed to. You'll see that kind of in the middle of the page it says Kaiser. This refers to the Kaiser Permanente study, big research hospital out in San Diego, California, who were the first to look at adverse childhood experiences and what percentage of the population experienced some kind of adverse events within their childhood. The numbers that you see from the Kaiser studies, they essentially say, we cannot do studies across the United States, across populations, races, areas of the country. They yield different results. They're like, functionally, all these results come back the same. You'll see that that's the case for Wisconsin, except in a few areas that the numbers are a little off. So like psychological, emotional trauma when they do it in Wisconsin is higher for some reason. Physical and sexual abuse in Wisconsin is lower for some reason. But then the numbers are pretty similar across the board. What happens when students experience trauma? And this is one of the things that we've really worked hard to understand is the signs that we're dealing with trauma and not something else because the effects of trauma are going to, a lot of times mimic ADHD. And then if we're treating it as ADHD, it's not going to work. And especially if students are going to their doctors with ADHD symptoms, getting treated for ADHD symptoms with ADHD medication, it's not going to take orders. You'll be stuck wondering like, why is this still happening? This is what we find, again, the case that Dave and I are going to be talking about. There's definitely more going on where you wouldn't even say like, this is an ADHD thing. But when you look at this, basic mistrust of adults and inability to depend on others. We're going to talk about how we work with this student and why that building trust is the most important thing that we can do from the get-go. And we really have a hard time doing anything with that. And when you think about trauma then and why this makes sense and like, why it works for kids is because they have a basic mistrust of adults due to the trauma that they experienced in their past. Belief that the world is an unsafe place and that bad things will happen, that they're my fault. Holy cow, is this true? Of our students that we work with that have some severe trauma in their background, we have to convince them that they're safe at all times. And for a while, a big part of Dave's job was convincing the student that they were safe when they got to school and after, like, when they were going to leave school. So anytime that they were transitioning environments, a big part of that was like, hey, you're here now, am I a bad person? Have I ever mistreated you? No, no, okay, like, let's move forward. It's something that others will not like me. Fear and pessimism about the future. If we can have any kind of future planning sometimes, that's a wonderful thing. But if we can, a lot of times it's fear and pessimism. Feelings of hopelessness and lack of control, huge. And we're going to talk about that pretty early on. How do you establish with these students that they're in control? And a lot of that is giving up some of your initial reactions, like we call it like the parenting reflex a lot of times, giving up a lot of that control and letting the student know that they're actually the one in control. Alright, so before I turn it more over to Dave, we have three main steps in helping students feel like they belong. The three Cs, curiosity, ask questions first, co-plan, you're developing solutions with students and the families. And three, connection, build that rapport. And I think we're going in opposite order here. No, we're not. Alright, so curiosity, Dave, do you want to talk a little bit how we have used curiosity with the student that we've been working with this year?
Yeah, with this particular student, you know, he came in extremely guarded. And he'd been through a lot of different experiences that the wall was up. And so often our students, they experienced adults constantly talking. Like you get into a conversation, you say, we're going to have a conversation, then the adult does all the talking and the kid just kind of sits there like, mhm, mhm. Well, this is kind of the complete opposite. When a situation were to occur, or if we kind of could sense something was going wrong, we would just kind of sit down and talk. And by talking, we would say three to four words.
After five minutes.
Yeah. And we'd just let the student go, just unload on us and tell us everything. And by doing this, you really get to see the different stages. Because at first, there's a lot of aggression, it's everyone else's fault. This is everyone else against me. And then as they start to regress, and then they calm down a little bit, then it's, well, how could you have handled that situation just a little differently? Well, and then they talk through different scenarios. And the big one that we always preach on is like, the event, response, the outcome. Okay, so this was the event. The student did this to you. How did you respond? Well, I flipped him off, or I said the F word to him. Well, what is the outcome of that? And then we talk through, okay, well, you did this, now this is occurring. What would have been a different response that you could have used at this point? And really letting the student have that ownership and letting them talk. So often, we constantly are telling them like, what to do, don't do this, and kind of like, almost badgering them. And then they're not growing. They're just constantly being told, do this, do that. But when you allow them to take that ownership and talk through this scenario, and you let them come up with, a lot of times, and we get a lot of flack for this, but if we have a student that is going to get a consequence, we'll pick three. We're comfortable with all three, but we're letting the student pick those three because then it's their choice. So you can, what do you think? You can do X, Y, Z. I'm happy with any of those. Like, if he picks X, cool. Alright, that's great. But he picked it, or she picked it. They're the ones that decided their outcome, and then they got that ownership. And that's, it's taken about a month and a half in the very beginning to really build up that trust. And almost every morning, it's, can I talk? Can I talk? And it's five minutes, we'll talk. And the student's very high energy, so often, first hour, they'll be like, alright, let's go shoot baskets. So he'll just shoot a basketball and talk and talk and talk and burn that energy. And then if there was a situation, we work through it. But just really letting that student, let them go, just let them enroll and just unwind everything.
Yeah, one of the things that we found too is that things would happen with the student and the message would get relayed adult to adult. And then it was kind of the adult telling the student what happened and why that was wrong. When we changed that approach to say, you know, hey, you get a call from an adult and they would say, this is what happened, and they would just run through it with you. Instead of going and telling that student again, what happened? We would just, we would say like, I don't know anything. Like, why don't you tell me what happened? You know, and say, did this teacher or this person tell you about that? No, they didn't tell me, why don't you tell me? We let them go. One of the things that we're finding with this student was people were just like, he's lying, he's lying, he's lying, he's lying, he's lying. Always lying. But Dave and I don't think like that with this student. We just take what he tells us and then we work with that. Because that's his reality. And one of the things we found from shutting up and listening to him is that he doesn't tell us wrong information, his memories. And remember, it affects the way that the brain works and it really is affecting their timeline. So with him, he tells us accurate information from different timeframe and events that happened, and it's pulled into one, right? So there was a situation this year where one of the issues that he was having at school was that he's like, I did this. I did this and don't tell me I didn't, and this person was there when I did it. Well, that person was with him all day long, except for the one time that he was referring to what he did correctly and that person wasn't there. We're finding these things pull in. And one of the times, we just had a long car ride from his place back here and we were just like letting him talk and he was telling me all these events. And then I backtracked it through all these notes I had on him. I'm like, all these things happen, but it's not in this order. And it's not as this event. They're all teased out. So that was something that was huge for us is like, whatever he tells us, that's accurate, but we make him take ownership, right? And we can question a little bit down, like, the line too is like, if that was this, why was that? And we can kind of sometimes tease out that he gets events lined up right, but it's that taking ownership piece. So we don't tell him right, wrong. We work on that event, response, outcome. You tell us your part in this.
And you know, the one big thing with that too is, you know, trying to help them understand that they're in control. Like, they have control of, you know, they're in control of the situation. As frustrated as they get, well, that's where we work on strategies to de-escalate, calm down, but really assess, like, you, like, your body's not just doing all these things and then you're just like, I'm a victim of my own body. It's you have control. And once they start to really understand, like, okay, I'm upset, I need to go for a walk. And like, you'll see it happen, he'll just go for a walk and do a lap, come back, very good. But it takes that time to really reinforce, like, you're in control, you're in control. But then it also comes back to him really understanding that we're looking out for him. And a lot of times, they come in with that wall built up so high. You know, the rapport and the trust, there has to be a trust and there has to be a consistency with our approach. And you can't come in hot one day with them and then come in mellow because then they don't really know. And there's been a time or two where, I'm usually very even keeled, but there was one time I even called Mr. Bolt and said, I kind of turned it up to about a level three on him. And as soon as I kind of changed my tone, he just kind of looked at me and then like completely redirected. But he's so used to people badgering him. And the common conversation between him and other adults was usually at about a level eight. So he's so used to that constant battering, like screaming, that's the normal conversation. We're going to scream at each other, we're going to sort through this problem by yelling. And then we found that just conversations are calm. If they're escalated, you stay one level. Don't ever elevate it, don't be force of force, just constant calm. And if every now and then you got to get a little spike, they know you mean business. But again, you know, flexibility, it's, there's no cookie cutter situation with these students. There's no recipe, there's no, there's no book on it. And I'm sure they write books on it, but if you've done it long enough, every case is so vastly different that you can pull bits and pieces, but there's no perfect scenario. And today was good. Come talk to me at 10 o'clock tomorrow morning and I'll let you know tomorrow is because every day it's completely different. But on our end, we have to stay consistent with our approach because typically, they're very, they're consistently inconsistent.
And we can work through his, some of his reactions to things that we previewed to brief from like known triggers. And we still see it, you know, every now and again, if something has to be changed during the day and we don't get enough time to debrief with him or preview with him on it, and it's not what you expected, we're going to have a bad day. But those bad days are less severe than they were at the beginning of the year because that trust exists between the student and Dave where if they tell him, hey, that's just the way things went, that's just the way it happened, I wish it could have gone differently, we can bring him down pretty quick. We use a lot of we language to sell, it shows that we're on a team and it's always in control. It's always like, that's your choice, it's your choice, what are you going to do? That's your choice, what did you do? You chose to do this. We do a lot of that kind of talk with him so that he realizes that he's in control and that it's a choice. And when he gets escalated, we let him know, he's big. So he's been able to kind of like intimidate people his whole life. So like, one of our strategies too is that if he's agitated and sometimes using threatening language, I'll sit down to show that he is so far over me. And he's the person in control right now and I'm just hanging out, right? Not intimidated by him, but you know, he's the person in control here because he's so far above me. And then he just starts to talk to me. So sometimes you got to have some faith that that's going to work.
Yeah, a lot of times, I mean, it's a lot of, a lot of walking and talking. Like, well, I found, especially when the weather's nice, it's starting to sunny all and the behaviors are escalated, like, you can ask Mr. Bolt, we're out the door. We go down to the track.
We live in San Diego, this stuff will be.
Yeah. We just say, alright, hey, let's talk, let's do a lap. And we walk down the track, do a lap, come right back in the building. And just getting them moving and talking and fresh air is like dynamite. It works so well with our students, just to kind of move around and really express themselves. Because I think once they get out of the building a little bit, or if they get in an area where there's no other people, that they can kind of feel a little bit more comfortable with talking. Because every now and then, the conversation would be going completely calm, like I'm talking, and then all of a sudden, it just, but it's just like the student just needs to kind of get that out. Then once we return to the building, and obviously, we have winters, so that's not always a common thing we can do, but even just to walk down to like the art rooms and back. I mean, that works really well, just getting them up and moving, get them out of that environment. Because a lot of times, they'll just sit there and they'll stew. And they'll just be thinking about, thinking, like, alright, let's go, let's just, I need a water, come with me, I'm going to put my water bottle, let's go. And just getting them out of that situation, it's helped a ton.
Yeah, and so we refer to that as a sensory diet. So just like what you take in your body, food-wise, the diet, the sensory stuff around you. So getting up and moving the body is a sensory diet. And for our student here, just all movement at all times is a sensory piece as well. Two, other students, you know, like the common ones we think of are like weighted blankets, swing movement, motor stuff, even drumming can be a sensory diet piece. But relying on those pieces as well prevents a lot of stuff that can get us back to center and ready to learn. So. And the connection piece too, Dave will, you know, Dave and I talked about how this one is the biggest piece, but if we can get a connection with a kid, we can do just about anything. But that groundwork is the curiosity and co-plan, what we've talked about before. The next one, it's our favorite, just stay calm, be nice. No matter what the kid does, says, whatever to you, just be nice. And consistency in approach. So if he does something wrong one day and I'm nice, and he does the same thing again tomorrow, I'm still nice about it. My mood and like what I'm walking in with and like the baggage that I'm carrying to work every single day or from like the last hour, that can't matter one bit. Because you have, and this is where Dave is especially talented, in training himself to just be like, this is my approach every single time. Unless, like he said, if he needs to leverage the connection, we call it leveraging the connection, is like, I need to go hard right now or I need to, you know, my intensity level. It's because it's a safety issue where he's going to get hurt or he is going to hurt somebody else where there's like an emergency. So we can control just with that voice and approach. Like, it's the same thing with like raising kids, right? So you don't yell at home unless you have to. Like, if your kid is in the middle of the street, just standing there, they hear mom or dad yell, it snaps in because they're not used to that, and you got their attention and they can come back.
Yeah, the connection, like, as educators, we all know if you have good rapport with a student, they're likely to work better for you. But even in our field, rapport is everything. We switched up some paraprofessionals and the first thing I sat down with the person who's working with them, I said, you need to build a relationship with this kid. I don't care what you do for the first two days, just talk video games, shoot hoops, you have to build a relationship. If he likes you and you have rapport with him, he will literally do anything you want and you will listen to you. But if you don't have a rapport, it's over. So, you know, they've been working on that and it's been pretty good. But again, it's just getting that rapport with the student. And that's the number one focus when working with students with trauma, is just them knowing, I got your back. I got your back. We're good, don't worry about it. And they always, they're always like, are you mad? Are you mad? It's like, no, I don't get mad. We're good, don't worry about it. And then they come the next morning, are you mad at me? What are you talking about? Every day is like restart, restart. And that's one of the hardest things for us. And it took some time to get to that point where literally, you can walk in the next day and it's a fresh slate. It's hard not to go home and think about it, then come in the morning and think about it. And I'm, I'll be honest, it's tough. But for the kids, you have to do that because they need that consistent approach. And if they think you're mad at them, how are they going to perform? Especially when they have everything else going on in their life.
That'll be all they're thinking about.
Yeah. And, you know, school's a small fraction of their life. And we want to make it a great experience for them. We want them to learn and be productive adults. But they also have a whole nother world that they deal with on a daily basis. So if we can't make this environment safe and really feel like they have that support, we're essentially failing. We have to create that environment. And we have a really good team with him. Like, he knows we have his back. So no matter what, he can turn to us, even if he's screaming the F word at us. He knows, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, are you mad? You don't get mad. It's like, yep, I know, we're good, we're good.
You're safe.
And if we could share more information about him, you'd realize really how far he's come in just a short amount of time with us from what he was, where he was at previously in his life until now. Part of my job is reminding Dave and the team that he works with because it can be very difficult on a day-to-day basis, just like how much we're winning in this regard and how far we've come. So any questions on the work or the approach?
With the, you two are obviously very calm, very even keeled, that kind of stuff. But then when he leaves your charge, does some of that rub off on him as far as being able to react? Or does he go?
He's getting better.
Well, that's the whole. We constantly preach that E plus R equals O. So you go home, and we've talked about this, you go home, and if it starts to fire up again, remember, you're in control of what happens. And obviously, we have a very long way to go. But keep reinforcing, like, you don't have to respond. Like, if someone's yelling, you can just go watch TV. Like, you're going to dictate this. And, you know, there's a lot of ingrained behaviors and within.
But he's had it so long.
Yeah, and that's the challenge.
That it's hard to break. And he gets it to a piece here, that going back to it all the time.
And we've reached out to families and said, like, okay, so here's what we're doing at school and it seems to be working. Not telling you how to parent, but if you'd like a strategy that we found to be pretty effective, you could try this. And we can provide them with the information whether they do it or not. You can't control that, but we can only provide them with information on how to handle these situations. Because a lot of parents, they don't know. I mean, they haven't worked with kids for a number of years. And so it's trying to educate them, but also not telling them how to parent. So it's a very fine line of providing the resources, but don't be like, you don't know what you're doing, this is what you need to do.
Who are you to come in here and tell me what to do with my child?
Yeah.
Dave, what would your goal for this young man be for him a year from now and five years from now?
To be a productive member of society and a field that he likes or that he can do independently. I think the progress that we've made, he may be a student that's in our 18 and 21 program, but we've had enough gains that if he continues, he'll be able to sustain the job.
Yeah, and so when we look at our long-term goal of being in high school, obviously, we have that finite line where we know that at the end, they're going to go on to do something else. Trying to figure out what that something else is, it's something that we play over and over again in our head. So like every interaction, every positive, every negative, we're constantly calibrating where they're at with that. So, you know, being out in our internships in the community. So, you know, being out in our internships in the community definitely helps. It's a great testing ground for that. You get ups and downs with it, but then we just keep trying to build forward, right? So if we're not successful one time, we're gonna come back, regroup, and we're gonna try again tomorrow, in a week, in a month, in a semester. But we just know that that's where we gotta get to. So that's where we gotta get to. And relatively hurried, like Sue said, you know, we're we're up against a lot here, but we do have time to get it done. And there's things that we've learned about him. And just like when we talk about sensory diets. So there's jobs out there for him that we found through our research in like the manufacturing field this year that are gonna provide him that sensory diet all day long, right? So then it's some of those other interactions and communications with people on the job and people, because you're not gonna go out on a job and have people understand him the way that we can understand him in the school setting with all the professionals we have. So he's gotta go out and be ready to be the the guy that we need him to be and be able to do that independently. But get him into a field where he can get that sensory diet, we can try to set him up for as much success as possible. And he'll have community resources too, but you know, it's not Dave and a, you know, and an aide with him.
But you're teaching him skills on how to do, deal with the different people and practice and practice and practice till it comes to natural.
Yeah. It's more, it's more trying to hard re-rework the hardwiring of the brain because it's all reaction-based right now. And and that's what it's gonna probably continue to be for a while. So we wanna re, we wanna reprogram that reaction.
How do you guys typically become aware of these students?
They know. No, it's all, it's all the IEPs, you know. So we get the information, whether that's from a feeder school or a transfer in. We get that information readily. And I mean, other schools are always good about, and for the most part, other schools are good about that. So like if we got somebody coming that's carrying that kind of baggage, I'm gonna get a call from the director of the other school to say, hey, here's what we got. And like, let's do it in brief. Because other schools want their students transferring as well as they possibly can too, no matter, you know, if that kid destroyed stuff at the other school or whatever. People in the industry kind of have a heart of gold and they're just like, I I hope you guys figure it out, you know, so.
Because they don't want to go backwards anymore. They've been trying to get, move forward.
You know, sometimes it's a double-edged sword because we, the paperwork can say one thing and then the kid can be another. It's just, it could have been a bad home life, it could have been a bad month when the paperwork was written. So you try to take everything with the most agreeance out. And typically, from my experience, I'll I'll look at my requirements, but then I try to start with every kid as a fresh slate and not, because some of those paperwork that comes in, you read it and it'd be like, oh, my goodness, Adam, what are you doing to me? Because some of these, some of the situations, the paperwork paints the student into being something they're completely not. And if you go in with that mindset, like, oh, this kid is axed, and it's like, whoa, what are you talking about?
Or sometimes the paperwork obfuscates the, the other stuff too. Like, that should be fine.
But you also get them at an age where their hormones are changing and everything, and that can happen.
Yeah, that's a, that's a wild card a lot of times too. We're just like, we just don't know, right? And some of the ones that are really bad communicators, they just, they tell us what their actions, you know, more than they're gonna tell us that like, you know, what their emotions are, so. And then, and a lot of times, we get students that are just physically developmentally delayed. And so we're not sure when that hormone onset is coming because it can be atypical at times.
And Craig, and getting back to what you said, when we get the student, we're always looking at the end goal. Like, that is kind of always in our scope. Like, we know we have a lot of little things that we gotta do along the way, but ultimately, we're always pushing towards either employment, education, or like armed services. Like, what do we see? Through the IEP process, you talk through different scenarios and you try to expose them to as much as possible to gain their interest. And then we're like, oh, he likes this. Let's start pushing him that way and try to get him an internship in that field. So we're constantly working towards that end goal, but ultimately, it's always independence and to be a productive member.
So you, your belief is that it is possible to, for these kids, this kid in particular and others like him, to be productive members of society? Hold on a job, not be in trouble with the law, whatever it might be, and that's.
From, from what we've seen in our numbers bear out, like when I present our post-secondary numbers, is that almost all of our students are engaged in society in some shape, some way, shape or form, right? So that's like that ninety-five percent number of like our graduates. So they're doing something, whether that's going to get trained, whether that's working fifteen hours a week, they're not sitting at home in mom and dad's house or basement doing nothing. So, and that's typically about ninety-five percent of our graduates from there on out. Sometimes that five percent is a motivation piece too, you know, and it's not necessarily disability. So we have to have that mindset with every single kid that comes by. One, because we believe in it. Two, if you don't have that mindset, it's like, what are you doing? You know, so, and we've learned lessons from that too. And there, there was a student that we had not too long ago where we were just trying to give him a good high school experience because we didn't have much hope for the outcome, looking at jail or or a mental hospital. And now he's just, you know, twenty-one-year-old so-and-so. You know, we see him driving around, he's got a job, you know. Good thing, you know, we thought, we thought that his employment was gonna be really limited to his very specific situation if he did. But all along throughout his schooling, he changed our minds and it was more or less like, we just kept him going in school and kept on believing that, hey, you can do this. Like, you can be at school, you have a right to be here. You don't have to get sent away for some of your behaviors. You get to be one of us. And just from having that belief, you really changed a lot of our mindsets to say, no, every single kid can be a productive member of society. So if this kid can do it from where he came from and is now just out there just completely fine, completely fine might be generous, but you know, he's a productive member of society, then we can do it with anyone, so.
You really wanna, if you wanna demonstrate to the student that you believe that they can do it. Because so often, they're told that you're gonna be a nothing. You're, you're gonna be a loser. But when they're here, you're constantly reinforcing, like, you can do this. Like, you don't have to live at home forever. Like, you can get a job, you want a car, you can get a car. But these are the steps we need to take to get you there and really reinforcing that, like, that belief. Because eventually, you get told something enough, you start to believe it, regardless if it's true or not. You're gonna start really truly believing that. Which is like, for, if you're told the team, you guys can win, you can win, they believe it and then they win. So it's kind of carrying over to our students, just making them believe you can do this. Like, you got it, let's go, keep going, keep going.
God bless you guys and thank you for your,
He must be an awesome.
Your patience and your perspective.
Go home and tell your wife that.
She can watch on the board, yeah.
Of course.
I think your hard, your hard work and dedication.
Yep.
Easy grab interior. Your hard work and dedication has paid off. Unbelievable in the results that we see. And then just, Adam, you mentioned about baggage that you may bring to school. Remember, that goes the other way too. Take good care of yourself.
I don't bring a lot of baggage.
We want you around with us.
But other people go, why, that's not a problem, Adam, why?
We want you around for a long time for your great work.
My other question, let's go ahead.
I was just going to say, you know, you work with him so much and it seems, you know, you do lots of things for the emotional, mental. What about like the schoolwork? Was he like way behind in school and have you noticed an improvement? And does he express, oh, I wanna do something beyond this, or is that kind of?
So often, I, the students are actually very strong academically. The pieces are there. You know, it's getting the emotions in check. Because we're always working on the academics. They're in classes. If they have a reading disability, we're working on the reading along with the emotional piece. But it's really trying to work on both. But if you can't get those emotions in check, they're not in the class. They're not gonna be willing to do homework because they're so upset or they can't control themselves. So it's really trying to do both. But as soon as you can kind of get the emotions in check, that's when the academics really escalate. And he's demonstrated throughout the year, great progress. I mean, he's improving. He's a very strong student. He can do it.
So often people.
But he is, but he is behind because he's missed so much. Isn't it like in, like, in certain subjects, they kind of build on themselves? Like, that's what we find too. It's like, when you miss so much, especially on a topic that really builds on itself, we're, we're still recovering from that. But yeah, I mean, it's the readiness to learn piece, you know. They can't do anything if their head's not right. And so they're getting that head right is, is a, a long hard task, so.
So I would just like to comment, Adam and Dave have described one case. Okay, this was a case example. And I think it's evident the amount of significant care, concern, effort that's gone into one student. Now I'll remind you in the presentation, the prevalence, the percentage of people in society that have had traumatic events, I mean, it ranged anywhere from eleven to thirty percent. Now, think about our Arrowhead population and how many students might be impacted by trauma and how it impacts their learning. And you've heard one example, lots of effort. It makes me so incredibly proud of our staff, our faculty here, because there are many examples. And the care, concern, and effort that goes into our student population is really, I mean, here's one example of many.
And you gotta take care of all the touchpoints, right? So we have the trust that when they go out into the building, that they're gonna be taken care of in a similar manner that we take care of them too. So we do all-staff training on these principles just to make sure that everyone has this trained understanding and is able to put it into, into place. So we're constantly reminding of these, you know, principles that we wanna hold with our students.
And I'm just the lucky one that got to be here to present, but the room we're in at North Campus has four other special ed teachers who all operate in the same system. So I'm kind of here representing them because we, we kind of all lean on each other. And, you know, I can't be there at the very moment. Someone can kind of slide in and fill my place, vice versa. So we kind of all, it, this, the case sounds like it's a one-man band, but it's truly a big team effort.
You have each other's back.
Yeah, everybody really leans on each other.
You have to.
Yep.
So Laura touched on one of my questions. How many kids on trauma are you working with currently?
It's impossible, it's impossible to know.
It depends on the day.
Yeah.
It depends on the day.
It depends on, it depends on the day, depends on, I mean, I mean, so that's part of the principles behind the three Cs, curiosity, co-playing, connection, is that we approach every student with those three Cs and not just the specific ones that we know have trauma because it's not gonna come up. A lot of times, we're digging through, we're finding like, hey, this student might be behaving this way because they're impacted by trauma. And like, then we can even go further into the way that we're interacting. But a very baseline, universal bubble, the way that we interact with all staff, students, whoever, we wanna use the three Cs, curiosity, co-playing, connection, because then we're gonna be, you know, even if you have been impacted by trauma, it's a great way to be interacted with. But if you have, it's a way to make you feel safe, so. So let's say sixty-six percent have some kind of adverse childhood experience, but then who have been impacted is a different number, right? So sixty, like, two-thirds is a very high number. That number consistently gets bounced back because everybody, you know, sixty-six percent having one adverse childhood experience or more. But again, remember, it's how you react to that. So like, you could be bullied in your past and just like not be impacted by it at all. Or you can be very impacted by it, so.
My other question is, you've been doing this for a while and so you've got a lot of kids that you've worked with over the years that that become your kids. What percentage do you think you follow five years down the line?
I have a very big pile of students that I can, you know, because I, I came from Stone Bank School. I taught there for two years. So I have a great pile of kids I had at Stone Bank. And then I came here and I taught at South Campus for two years.
And then they were coming in.
At Stone Bank was with me at South Campus. Well, then I moved to North. So I had eight to ten kids that I worked with for six years.
You liked to pipe pipers.
Yeah, so from seventh grade to twelfth grade, I followed them all the way through, so.
And then like after school though too, when they're out?
Yeah.
Like, you get a lot of texts for jobs, like people, it's like, do you have any jobs? They're not like jobs in Arrowhead, like jobs in the community that you know, because I'm looking or, you know, how do I do this?
A lot of them will keep in touch and ask,
They will.
Do you know anybody that's hiring? I just graduated from CTC in machining. Where can I go? You know, different avenues. And then, you know, we've talked about, I wish we knew what we do now five years ago, because there's a couple of kids that fit the profile for a lot of jobs that we're finding through manufacturing. So it's like, I'm tracking down their email or phone number, like, hey, you need to call Valdo. They're hiring, they're perfect for this. Like, go, 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 quit your double jobs, go do this one job, make a career out of it. I mean, that's the big, that's really the big thing we wanna get away from is getting them jobs. We wanna get them careers. And there's a huge difference in that, like, yeah, I have a job. So what are you doing? Well, I help this guy three times a week. It's like, okay, we need to get you a career. And then, because insurance starts to become a thing once they get to twenty-seven, retirement, I know at twenty-one, they really don't think about the retirement. But the ones that do, I mean, they're finding that, holy cow, I get into the trades at eighteen, I get a 401K, I get full benefits, and I start climbing the ladder. By the time I get to fifty, I'm looking at possibly retiring. So the one, now we're very educated in the trades, where five years ago, didn't really know a whole bunch, but that's been a major focus is like, post-secondary employment, finding the trades and really learning about how to get the kids into it. Because we've always said, well, I'll be an electrician. Um, how do you do that? And that's usually where the conversation ends. But now we know, you gotta go to the union hall on a third Wednesday, sit down, fill out your paperwork, take these tests, they'll find you employment, go. And it's the union versus non-union, either one.
We need them and they need the job. I mean,
Oh, yeah.
The trades need them.
The labor fields right now are dying. I mean, if you can not be on your phone twenty-four hours a day and show up on time,
You got a job.
They will hire you.
Well, you can't retire at fifty.
No.
No.
I mean, your kids might be able to, you can't, okay?
So we're forty-five minutes in, I guess, I had, I had like seven slides of material, so I try to keep it brief as much as possible.
It's wonderful.
So you guys hire out and, and work with adults?
He's not very nice. He needs training.
Sue is just trying.
I'm really nice.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks. You're leaving.
Hey, Dave, thanks.
All right, anything else, Laura?
The only other thing I'd like to touch on in my superintendent report is it's inevitable. You've seen news and you've been hearing about the COVID-19, AKA coronavirus. We sent a letter home to families on Monday that was purely meant to be a preventative proactive letter talking about ways that they can help keep themselves, students, staff, and parents all got the letter. Keep yourself as healthy as possible, all of those tips, washing your hands for twenty seconds and all of that. So we've put some proactive information out. We are in close contact with Waukesha County Health Department, who is following the Center for Disease Control, all of their guidelines. So I just wanna reassure the board and the community that we are, we're as prepared as we can be. We've been, as an administrative team, we've been meeting and coming up with some if-then scenarios in terms of our students and potential continued learning. We've been meeting on the HR side of it, different types of employees, what would happen if, if we were closed for three days, what does that look like? If, if we had to close for two weeks, if schools closed for a month. We do not have details to share because, again, we're waiting for Waukesha County and direction. If we're gonna close school, that's not really our decision. That's a Waukesha County Health Department decision. But we are working long and hard to have situational responses.
But we don't have anybody now that has a do.
To our knowledge, there, we don't have impacted Arrowhead. So hopefully, we will not. And hopefully, everyone stays healthy and safe and sound. But we are, you know, we're working hard on coming up with plans that would be appropriate if we need to do something other than a typical regular school schedule and school day. And certainly, if something were to happen where we'd have to close school for a day or a week or longer, we would keep the board informed. We'd be keeping families informed.
My son's in Seattle. His office has been, it's closing now for two and a half weeks.
What's closed?
My son where he works in Seattle.
Yeah, all of King County. My grandkids are off school for two weeks.
I know. I, I mean, it's, I'm just talking about Idi Bar, but you know, all of downtown Seattle and everywhere is, they're not doing anything.
Nope, everybody's working from home.
Yeah, that's getting closer. There was a case identified in the town of Waukesha this today, I guess, so.
But sixty-one thousand people died two years ago from the flu, right? Sixty-one thousand. And that included kids.
So we'll keep you posted, but I just wanted to touch base on that.
Can we run through some if-then kind of scenarios, like?
I'm not comfortable with that because I'm not prepared. I don't have my things with me. We still have meetings and it isn't a school board agenda item. So we can't discuss, I mean, legally, we can't be discussing business that isn't posted for the community. for the community. So I just, I'm not prepared to discuss if-then scenarios.
We have this letter, like, everybody else, and we'll keep following that until we get another letter from the county that says do it this way.
Okay. All right, thank you. Committee reports, curriculum. You have nothing to report.
We don't have anything.
Isn't that too much, Earl?
It is.
So you have a meeting coming up, all right?
Don't tell me.
All right, finance and legislation, Craig.
We have them coming.
Jeff, you mean.
Jeff, you mean. Just a brief.
All one's name over there.
Jeff has been informed about the budget development, and I certainly have not.
Right, and it's mostly in terms of...
Working with our ODT, we've spent, I think, close to an eight-hour day the other day, trying, working on balancing the budget. So we walked away with a pretty solid plan, we went through all supplemental requests that comes from the departments, it comes from IT or technology, comes from buildings and grounds, and we sifted through all of that to bring it down in line with a balanced We've learned information since then that may have us make some adjustments next week when we meet again. But we do know our factors from the state that we're working with, and we don't believe anything will change there because we're in the second year of the biennium or going into that. So we're just working away, getting ready to bring things to the finance committee meeting for some discussion. And then there'll be a, we've got one scheduled for the eighteenth, but then there'll be another one, I believe, in April. Actually, it's probably the eighteenth one where we'll cover the majority of where we're at with the budget. So, that's all.
Thanks, Craig.
Sure.
You said a lot, your lips never move.
That's your only question.
All right, building and grounds, Ken.
We actually had a meeting.
Well, yeah, it didn't for a long time, so...
So first thing we talked about was neighbor virus along the western edge of Viltor property, or now our property. The fence aligned along there is pretty decrepit and in very poor shape. And the neighborhood liked to, has offered to remove the fence, get rid of all the old barbed wire and posts and everything else, because he'd like to plant trees in there. We said, go at it, with our blessing. So saves us effort and everything else and money and longing to do it, that'd be fantastic. We also talked about site improvement. One of the things we're looking at doing was, when we're working on the football field area, we're talking about moving, possibly moving the long jump area and some of the other areas along the south end of the football field. We got cost estimates on that, and it was, as you can see in the report, the numbers are pretty amazing for what they wanted to do. And plus, as I recall, around a hundred thousand over budget, just a budget. So we decided we're not gonna do any of that stuff. It was gonna impact on the parking lot, we're gonna move the fence farther south, possibly move the long jump in that area, shot put, and that would've impacted on the parking lot as well. We do some of the area that we now use for buses and that kind of stuff, we decided it just was not at this point in the best interest of moving forward that, so we're gonna leave that alone. And then Bob has been talking to Harlem about Campus Drive, which, in fact, if you want to report on that, that'd be great.
Yeah, the project that we talked about in the past up on Campus Drive across from the Lutheran High School apparently is moving forward. And so it'll be attending a planning commission meeting coming up to reiterate our position in support of that road and partnering to get it done in conjunction with the other projects. So we'll see how that conversation goes, so that'll be coming up. So it's, still working on it. All the conversations I've had, so far, have been positive, so we'll see where it goes.
Anyway, that was about it. Our next meeting is April first.
Nothing for personnel, though. We do have a meeting coming up at the end of March. Policy, Donna?
Nothing yet. Our meeting on the sixteenth, is that going to be reviewing the policy guide?
No, not the whole policy guide. April sixteenth would be looking at the athletic parent and student handbook, and then a couple of policies, a couple of them that need tweaking, and then keeping an eye on some legislation that's just changed, and to review our related policies for some wording updates.
So anybody on policy, go through your athletic and student handbook.
Is it including anything with the seclusion? They just changed the law on the seclusion?
Right, so that's one of the policies we have to review to see if our wording matches. The way that the law has changed in that will not be a change in practice for us, but we'll look at the policy to see if that needs to change. There are a couple of things like that where laws change, not necessarily a change in practice for us, but we want to make sure our policies match the law.
All right, WSP, there's nothing to report. CISA, Sue? Anything with CISA?
Okay, and our new business, employee transactions, we do have some, we don't have the resignations or retirements, we have contracts and letters of appointment, which were included in your Entertained a motion to approve those contracts.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any question on those? Hearing none, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next action item is discussion and action on the twenty-twenty-one occupational therapy services sixty-six zero-three-zero-one cooperative agreement, which was also included in your packet.
Move to accept the agreement.
A motion available, second?
Second.
And a second. Any questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This is an interesting one, discussion and action on the amendment and restatement of the Arrowhead Union High School 403B plan with restatement date of January first, twenty-ten. Or is it, should be twenty-twenty?
Twenty-ten. I can explain.
Yeah, please do.
Please do. So the IRS established, they took from two thousand ten till two thousand seventeen to establish the rules and requirements related to 403B documents. So our last 403B document was done in two thousand thirteen, and by restating it and amending it to fit the format of the IRS and all of their requirements, it takes us back, it goes back to two thousand ten and it backdates it and says we're legal from two thousand ten forward. So that's the value in doing this. It's due by March thirty-one of this year to be able to get that done and be in good shape for any IRS audit going back to two thousand ten. So it's really important, if you were to fail that, it makes your 403B plan taxable to all those that were using it, which wouldn't be a good thing. I might have a short life here.
Short life on dessert.
So that's the reason for it. So we have used, and the other thing is, you know, in thirteen, we made a best effort because we had an idea what those requirements were gonna be, but it wasn't IRS-approved yet because they didn't have their requirements in place. So now we've taken an IRS-approved document, brought it to you, put what our plan design has in it, with one adjustment, we took out the, we still have the over-age-fifty catch-up, but we took away the fifteen years of service catch-up provision and excluded that. The reason being, that's a easy one to trip up for a district, you know, it's, what do you count as years of service? Someone was here for two years, then there was a gap in service, and then they came back for thirteen more years. Is that fifteen years of service? And if you don't count that the same and consistent, from business manager to business manager to business manager, it puts your plan in jeopardy. So we just pulled that out. It's really easy to tell when people turn age fifty. So we kept that in. And then there's other avenues to catch up through our 457 plan if people want to invest even more into retirement. So we have those other avenues available, so that was the only reason, the only change, really, that we made.
Make Steve come back and do all the...
But school districts across the land are all doing the same thing.
So it's a good thing.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second to approve that. Any questions for Jeff?
Who made the motion in a second?
I thought we did.
Oh, we didn't. I discussed first.
I'll make a motion.
I'll circle it.
We have a motion in a second. Now, is there any questions?
It's all fine, backdating it like that, I'm sure is not a problem with legal or...
Did anybody get a record?
No. Just one.
They actually, the verbiage came from the attorneys. Okay. To go back and back.
Anybody want to reenact?
I assumed it was.
All right. We have a motion in a second, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. No donations, so this, Ken wants to write us a check for something.
I forgot my check for... I know, if you have something.
Does anybody have any future agenda items?
I wonder if it might be appropriate to have a standing agenda item dealing with the COVID-19 issue and school plans for dealing with that. I wonder if we might even consider doing a special meeting to try and address that. It seems like the thing most likely to disrupt our school in the next few weeks. So that would be what I would...
Just a couple of, one reminder, if you're interested, on April twenty-fifth, the Hall of Fame dinner is at the Seven Seas, eight fine people we're putting into the Hall of Fame this year.
But you really can't...
It's also prom, if anyone wants to come to the April prom.
Yeah, and prom. So Ryan will be running back and forth again.
You really can't sign it, they'll have to sign up and pay for it and all that in April.
What's that?
You can't pay for it or get on it now for the dinner.
Okay.
It's in April when it's posted, you can get signed up. So I just talked to Liz today about it.
So there's information on the website about who's going in, so...
Right, there's that, but in terms of if you're gonna be able to go.
Right.
Get on there April first.
And then, I want to thank Laura, she set up, her and I went and gave a surprise visit to Dave Olenczek's class, where Dave was the Coral Fellowship recipient this year. So we, did you see his response? After Laura and I talked to the class, he asked the class if they wanted to continue talking about him in the positive light, and he said, no, let's go back to math. So, it didn't, his happiness didn't last on that one.
He's happy when he's teaching math.
Yeah, I mean, that is his happiness.
And then we also got to recognize, surprised Keegan O'Toole, if you know, Keegan won four state championships in wrestling, four years in a row.
So cool.
It was an amazing accomplishment. First Arrowhead student, yeah.
You know, and that was awesome.
First Arrowhead student to ever do that, and only the eighteenth in the history of the state to ever do that.
That's so neat.
So it's an amazing accomplishment, and the whole team...
They said he broke down when it was all happening.
Right, the whole team represented Arrowhead in a very positive stage, big stage, so.
The whole center.
Spring sports is...
Yeah.
Standing ovation from the goal center.
I just think he broke down, you know, when it happened, and he just realized the magnitude of what he did, and he got that. That's really cool.
Very cool. Boys basketball plays tomorrow night?
Tomorrow night, Germantown.
In Sussex, right? No, in Germantown against Sussex.
Against Sussex, right.
Twenty and one, I think.
And if you didn't see in the paper, Carl Gilmore broke a school record, single game, forty-nine points he scored the other day. And now he's the leader of boys' basketball, encouraging, historically, he's now got that, which stood since like nineteen fifty-six.
Was like the only one on the field, I mean, the court or whatever.
They could stop, it was...
What a cool thing to have happen.
A lot of proud Arrowhead members, so...
Yeah.
All right, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
And a second, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.